We open our hearing or open our meeting. So, welcome everyone to the eighteenth of January twenty twenty-two Winchester Planning Board Meeting. We have with us tonight are Brian Zakely, I was gonna say our host, but our town planner, Brian Zakely. Also, our recording secretary, Nancy Paccari, and a full complement of planning board members, and I will do a roll call vote. If you just say present when I call out your name, Sally Dale.
Present.
Cheryl Wolf.
I'm here.
Excellent. Echin Scott.
Present.
Kurt Spring.
Present.
And Dejav Jerry is also present. And we also have Windcam this evening. We are being recorded by Windcam as well as by Zoom. So if you do not wish to appear on the recording, please make sure your audio and your video are off. So hopefully you can all see my screen and why don't we go through this more this evening's agenda. It seems to be simple, but it of course isn't. So we have our meeting updates, our open meeting, I'm sorry, are any updates? We will be talking about consultants to continue our study of rezoning on North Main Street. We will reopen our hearing on ten Converse Place at seven forty-five. And then at eight forty-five, we will be going into executive session for planner review. And we will not be coming out of executive session, so we will just, as far as recording, everything will stop at eight forty-five. So why don't we begin? Are there any updates that anyone would like to present? And I'm having a hard time seeing if anyone is raising their hand. So actually, I can't see anyone right now.
Oh, I'm raising my hand.
Sally's raising her hand.
Yeah, sorry, I can't see it. I can't see anyone but myself right now. That's annoying.
Well, you're looking good, Dejav.
Sure, okay, well, if you'd all just, yeah, so Sally, go ahead, please.
My updates are that Yiching and I are co-chairing a working group and Yiching sent out today a Google doodle poll to get the working group first meeting scheduled, for which I'm extremely grateful because I tried to do it and discovered that I don't know how. So thank you, Yiching, for that. And also, I can report that Dejav and I are on the tree working group, which is making progress towards producing or presenting or convening, I guess is the word, a tree forum in February to kick off the process of finding ways to improve the way that we take care of and advance our trees in Winchester. So that's coming soon to our town. And then I didn't have any other updates, but I did have update questions, but we should just wait and see who has updates.
I don't have any further update. And if no one else has any updates, please go ahead, Sally, if you have any.
My question is, I know that we have a townwide traffic and transportation study that is coming, that is being done, and it's also separate from the downtown Improvement Action Plan, which has, I guess, parking aspects to it, if I'm not mistaken. And so it would be great. And if we can't do it now, we don't have to, but it would be great to have updates on both of those projects because they represent, you know, planned type stuff in Winchester. We're not the commissioners of streets, but I'm interested to hear the progress. That's, that's, I mean, it would be great to have an update on Waterfield, but that's okay. Those are things that I'm asking, not reporting.
Yeah, I think what we should do is, why don't we make sure that we get those updates for our next meeting, because I don't know if anyone here is capable of answering those questions at the moment, Sally.
Okay.
So.
I can, I can provide a little bit of, yeah, so for the Waterfield update, there was a very brief one at the select board meeting last week that just outlined that the acting town manager and the assistant town manager are meeting with Civico on a regular basis with the idea of potentially adding more units through not using the Chamber of Commerce building and instead tearing that down and potentially using that for units or parking or something else. So they're looking to see how much they can change the project without, you know, significantly changing the project. So that is a very brief update, but that's all that was given at the select board, that they're meeting, that the, those, that the, the acting town manager and the assistant town manager are meeting with Civico regularly. As far as the the townwide traffic and transportation plan, that has not really gotten off the ground yet. I believe there is an initial kick, there's a kickoff meeting, I believe, sometime soon, that I think there, that is being organized. But the DIAP, the Downtown Improvement Action Plan, has been going at a pretty steady clip that I've been involved in a lot of those meetings. And the update is that tool design plans to share the potential public infrastructure projects related to expanding outdoor space and traffic calming. Those are kind of the two main parts of the DIAP are what can we do to enhance or enlarge or in, or to enlarge physical public space in the downtown, either making certain areas more safe or expanding viewing points over Center Falls, over the Center Falls Dam, or lighting projects, and then a whole bunch of traffic calming projects. Those are the two main things. And they're going to be presenting those ideas sometime in the next two to three weeks for the select board. And, you know, it's very far encompassing in terms of how much money would be involved with all of these potential projects. It's actually very exciting to look at the potential of downtown when it comes to the traffic calming and other infrastructure projects related to public space. So that should be coming out as just options, no decisions yet, but just options that tool have come up with that would still be have, you know, a public meeting about, several public meetings about. That should be coming up in the next, I believe, two to four weeks. So I'll certainly let send that out in terms of whenever there's a date about whenever the DIAP is in front of the select board.
That's great. Thank you. That's really, really informative and helpful. Thank you.
Sure thing.
Okay. If we have no further updates, then we do have some meeting minutes to go through. Anyone?
Dejav, you have on your screen two black boxes. Do you know that those are there?
Well, I know they're there, but they don't look black to me.
Okay.
One of them is a, is actually, I believe, the, I'm trying to show the edits that you presented, but it's, I don't. Yeah, so this is a Zoom thing. Do you see, what do you see? Do you see minutes at all?
Yep, we see the minutes, but they're tiny. You can make them bigger.
I can make them bigger, but if I bring this forward, you just see a black box?
No, it's clear of the black box.
Oh, okay. Well, maybe the black box is, is that better?
That's better. That moves the.
Okay, that is the Zoom participants window. Okay, so that's, that's the mystery. So what I'd like to show are, so we, we did not finish our meeting minutes or approve them for the twenty-second, or sorry, the twenty-third of November, because Sally had a set of extensive provisions.
Well, I hope they're not as extensive as they feel. On page one, under updates, Mr. Zakely, the third bullet is reported as Brian saying there's a possibility that it will all be rental units. And I think that we decided that it should say it will be all rental units with at least twenty-five, ideally fifty percent designated affordable.
Okay, so that's what, what hopefully you can see on my screen here, as this is the, the change.
There's a, it will be all rental with at least twenty-five, ideally fifty.
Okay.
Taking out, it's a possibility at, so.
Is there, so why don't we just go, there's one by one, does the board, anyone on the board have, is this okay with everyone? And again, I can only see four of you at a time.
Drag your screen bar to the left a little, the screen divider.
No, I don't, I, I'm showing my full screen to you, I, I, because I'm doing.
Oh, yeah, I see.
So everyone just turn your mics on and yell at me, because I, that's the easiest way. So let's just say the first edit is okay.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry, super quick. So this is for Washington and Swatton, and correct?
That's right.
Yeah, so it definitely is at least twenty-five percent affordable, but I, 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 I don't think the way that the RFP is structured is that saying that it's ideally fifty percent. I would say with at least twenty-five percent with more points, if you get higher than that, but there is no fifty percent number.
Right, so we should take out ideally fifty percent.
Okay, so let's just, so I don't have Word, I have this, this Word-ish thing, so.
That's okay. I'll just make a note so that I, so Nancy and I can go over them.
Okay, so.
Then, the next one down, it says that I wanted to in, insert in blue, see, Holton Street will be going out to, because there's a forty-five, Metropolitan Area Planning Council would be the best group for this work. And I wanted to say, to advance this project in this fiscal year with public input, because that's what was important, was we get it done in this fiscal year. And then they would offer instead of funds, support in the form of technical assistance. And then I believe in my notes, I had that there was twelve to fourteen left over from the master plan budget.
So if they're, everyone okay with that? I think it's fine.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Did we get everybody?
I, I think everyone who, yeah, I think we got everyone. Nobody said no.
Who?
No one said no.
Oh, good, okay, I thought someone maybe. And then, Dejav, under page two, public hearing, I wanted to take out to extend the height higher than what?
Yep.
To increase the FAR over the two point five that is.
Okay, everyone is, that seems reasonable.
And then.
Go ahead.
And then put in the project provide, if the project provides diverse housing that addresses Winchester's needs, and if the design meets.
Did someone say something? Nope.
I just said yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then instead of saying this applicant has a PUD three, it, it's more to say that they've applied for an FAR of three point oh under provisions. And then.
But this one.
Take out, let's see.
I think we can, we can all, I, I, can everyone read what's on the screen? I might go faster than. If we just, everyone could look at what's on the screen, because I think everyone okay with this one?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the next block.
The next block here. I think that is.
That was an important point that you made, Dejav. That is to say if ten Converse Places, condos, and so on, yes, that was good.
Okay. I think that is, that's a good summation of what John said. Everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. And then.
People who want to dump, and people who work in Winchester who wish to live here.
Yep. And then.
This was probably from me reviewing the tape.
Yeah, I think that's what, that's what John did say, yep.
Or Ian.
I'm pretty sure that, yeah, I think that's a, that's a valid or accurate description. And I believe that is the scope that we gave Mr. Chen.
And then he stated that, and this is me going to the tape, I believe, he stated that he sees his role as assisting the planning board and applying the design guidelines and bringing clarity to them. And he noted it appears that everyone's attention, intentions are aligned regarding providing diverse housing and enlivening the downtown.
Okay, any, any concerns about that one? Then I think that the easiest way to do that is that I think that there, we would, Sally, this phrase right here, I believe you were going to amend that.
Yep, I'm going to take out nearly fifty percent.
And so then we would, a motion would be to approve the minutes of November the twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, as amended, and all of these amendments are those. And someone like to make that motion?
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Excellent. Roll call vote, please. Cheryl Wolf.
Aye.
Sally Dale.
Aye.
Echin Scott.
Aye.
Oh, my God, Kurt, I forgot your last name. Kurt Spring.
Aye.
Dejav Jerry, I think I remembered mine. Okay, five zero, thank you much. And Sally, thank you for that work. And if you could send your edits off to Nancy, then.
I will be in touch, Nancy.
Okay, thank you much. So that is, we just squeezed right in under the under the, under the wire there. Okay, so let's open this up to our discussion about North Main Street consultants. So what we really need to talk about tonight, the most important part, I think, is what is the scope? And when we talk about the scope, that would help us narrow in on what we would wish our consultants to what services we'd wish them to provide us. And I know there have been lists of consultants that have been sent around that I will hopefully find. But why don't we start talking about the scope? So we're, we're, I know that we had talked about two different facets, which were help on writing up design guidelines as well as public outreach. And Brian has informed me that if we wish to do both of those, then we will need more than ten thousand dollars. So why don't we first ask, see what we want, and then we'll figure out the rest from there. So I'm going to open up the floor. Just go ahead and oh, why don't I just go around, Robin? Why don't we do this in order? Cheryl.
I'm sorry, I lost track of what you, what, what am I being asked? I apologize.
No, no problem. I put you on the spot. Topped up first here. So we're talking about further consultants to help us with North Main Street rezoning. And we're trying to come up with the scope and we had previously talked about design for design guidelines as well as outreach. It's consultants for both, hoping to find someone who would do both. So what would your ideas be about? What kind of scope would you like to see out of this consultant?
So so I think really having a better understanding of the, the urban design aspect at the edge of the street. I, I know that a lot of the information that we were given is reflective of, obviously, improving the walkability of of mains, North Main Street, as well as, you know, how we, as planners, create guidelines for the zoning, but I, or for the, the design, but I, I think really having someone onboard urban design, landscape design, that sort of thing would be something that I, I would really like to see. I think that it would also really help in the long run with visualizing some of the changes that we would like to present. I mean, I, I guess I'm seeing not just the analysis in diagram that we, we received. A, a really great report, obvious, obviously, I'm really happy with what we have so far, but I think I think that taking that a step further, if if we start to put together a, a package for town meeting or, you know, getting more people onboard, I think we need, we need to visualize that a little bit more as a as a streetscape or a, an environment, rather than a set of measurements and you know, colored diagrams. So urban designer and landscape designer, I know some firms that combine that skillset, I think that would be a really valuable step forward.
Okay. Cool, thank you. I think we're gonna probably do a couple of rounds on this, but since I can't see everyone, it makes it difficult. Next person up I've got is Yiching. Did you have, did you wanna?
Yeah, I appreciate Brian's comments about what he was thinking of inviting focus groups to people who, stakeholders that hadn't been sort of been contacted. And I kind of wanted, was wondering who those stakeholders are and what, and what, what he means and who exactly. Um, that was one thing. And I'm thinking for fall town meeting, what we are aiming to do, which is it, is it to then submit the design guidelines to pass into? Or are we still on the zoning, a rezoning, an upzoning of this place, so that, that it's legislation? Because with that, with those two, I feel like that yeah, ten thousand dollars would be way too little to ask somebody to help us get to those points. Um, but yes, I agree with Cheryl, landscape, our urban design would be great, but I, I also think that this particular stretch of the town, because it's been historically, you know, had some divestment and, and redlining and some marginalized places and people. I, I hope to find somebody who is sensitive to those things and be able to communicate in a way that is very inclusive. And that, that would be what I would prefer.
Just to quickly answer the stakeholders, so these are just other businesses and residents that live in the North Main Street corridor that we did not hear from. That's, that's probably a little bit more than, well, that's about, I guess, the half of the audience. And then the other half of the audience and stakeholders that we need to engage with are town meeting members, especially in those, you know, especially in those precincts to not just get their feedback, but to, you know, incorporate their feedback. So, yeah, tho- those are the kind of the two main stakeholders that I was thinking of. And then you had one more question, Yiching?
What was it? Um, well, what were we gonna present at town meeting twenty twenty?
Oh, yeah, no, this is a good question with the timing of whether, of the design guideline. So up until this point, I was under the impression, and the scope can change, this is, it's not, it, it's really up to the board, but this was just, maybe this is my misunderstanding, was that the scope was going to be a, how do we get to town meeting from a public engagement standpoint? The design guidelines, you, one, one could say that, you know, if you have those design guidelines fully vetted before you get to town meeting, that may, you know, there might be a higher chance of success. However, it takes, it takes time and, like, you have the whole zoning, and then you also have design guidelines where portions of them may get incorporated into the zoning, but the bulk of it are, is not zoning. So you, you could, the question is, who, where do you do first? Do you do the design guidelines with it or without? I would say how it's been done in the past in Winchester was the design guidelines were developed after the zoning was passed, but there's, we've learned something from that. In that, in the time that when you do pass them, there's this, this in-between time where there are no design guidelines. So they're like, the bare, more than just the bare bones of the design guidelines, you need to be incorporated, meaning that we don't want to go back to do a zoning change to incorporate some of those design guidelines. So I think the best, under the, the best possible situation was that, would be that you're kind of starting to do those design guidelines and have like the pillars of those design guidelines. And if that's not enough, then you, you, you kind of wait till the design guidelines are finalized, and then you incorporate them into the zoning. So I will say that we have learned something through doing this, that I, I think that maybe doing it differently, which is what I'm, what I'm advocating for at the moment, is having more of those design guidelines flushed out before going to town meeting, so.
This is, this is Cheryl, Brian, I really like what you, what you said in the, and bringing your experience to the, to this process, you know, this sort of collaboration with all of us. It's, I, I think that this idea of having town meeting stakeholders and, and a public sort of forum, or public invited anyway, where, where a urban designer or someone with a design background could kind of create a workshop of some sort, that really, that, that the takeaway is how the people in those neighborhoods, in those locations, stakeholders, as you call them, really give input, and the out, the output is something that is, is more than design guidelines. It's, it's actually, and it's ideas about design guidelines almost, before you get to the guidelines almost. I'm being a little bit of a almoister here, because I'm not really sure what I'm talking about, but I think the workshop kind of process in terms of design, if you, if you do invite people to give their input, it could be, it could be really productive for a future presentation, without getting to the guidelines exactly. Does that?
Yeah, that sounded, that sounded like a great idea.
Does that work, though, with the town process, Brian? I know you're not feeling like talking, but sorry.
No, so I did, I did get something from MAPC, MAPC, not that, again, not that we, specifically related to North Main Street, because I asked for it, I said, we're looking to do more engagement, and no matter what, we would have to get three, we wouldn't be putting an RFP out because this is such little money, it's under thirty K. We're allowed to through the procurement laws to just solicit three quotes that are reasonable, and then we can choose the best person, you know, the best firm from there, using sound business practices. So I was, we're gonna need a quote from him anyway. So I do have that, and I could share that, and this is not necessarily to promote MAPC, but just more of to promote what kind of money you can get, for, you know, what you can get for the money that we have. So, hold on.
Wait, what?
Sure, yeah.
I just, I, I wanna, I wanna keep going through, getting people's thoughts.
Okay.
So if you could.
Why don't, yeah, why don't, I'll hold off.
Yeah, just hold off one sec, because so who hasn't spoken yet? Yiching, did you get your questions answered?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. And for some reason, everyone's picture just disappeared. And Kurt?
Yeah, no, I think we should keep them. I, I like, I'd sort of like the way the momentum was going. I think that, I liked Cheryl's idea of introducing this idea of an urban designer, someone can help us actually visualize and create like the dynamic in the streetscape that people want, incorporating the stakeholders into that conversation and hopefully coalescing around something that starts to evolve and fold into design guidelines and zoning. So I mean, I, it seems like we're on the right track. I don't have anything to add. I think. So I mean, I, it seems like we're on the right track. I don't have anything to add. I think it's, I think we should keep advancing.
Okay.
You said it so much better. Thanks, Kurt.
And so Sally.
Um, so I agree with everything that Cheryl said. I, when I was researching firms that I thought about could do this work, and the scope that I had in mind was that they would do the forums and the focus groups that Brian described, and they would help us with design guidelines, as Cheryl and E Ching have talked about, and they would help us navigate the zoning bylaw process to the extent that they have expertise in that area, but we also have our town council for that. But in particular, that they would be able to help us through all of those steps with all of the visualizing that is necessary for engaging the stakeholders in a supportive way. So I'm totally in favor of having an urban design slash landscape architecture firm be the designer and that the scope of the work, or would be the consultant, I mean to say, and that the scope of the work would be the focus groups and the workshops, the forum. It would also be coming up with a street design, a comprehensive street design, one mile up and one mile back that addresses every unique condition up and down the street and responds completely to the input from all of the stakeholders in those facilitated community engagement sessions. And then translate those visual images or parallel with creating them, I guess, you create the design standards and then figure out where the zoning needs to go from there. So I heartily endorse what Cheryl said. And that's expanded scope and realize the $10,000 is just for the focus groups and the and get, you know, other community engagement, focus groups and forums. And it probably wouldn't be good to have a different consultant to do the focus groups and forums and then hire someone else to do the the streetscape design, the smart streets design and the design standards. You wouldn't have one person do all three. That make sense?
Yeah, I, I, I think that everyone so far has been in remarkable consensus, which is excellent. So I reserve for myself the the necessity of raining on the parade just a little. And that is only because while I agree with everyone, I think that we have to make some hard decisions about what zoning changes we need to make before it goes to the design guidelines. And I think we have, we have a, we were given a palette of possible zoning changes, and some of them are gonna require incredible. They they will end up with different parts of North Main Street looking very differently if they're all applied in the same way. I'm, I'm trying to say is that there's a wide range of effects of all of these zoning, of these proposed changes. And so I think that we need to provide some guidance to the consultants as to which ones we think are the ones they should focus on, because otherwise they, you know, they're just, we have to give them direction. And so I think that the scope that we've got so far is great, but I think we have to narrow the focus a bit towards the vision that we see. And I like the idea, Sally, of your comprehensive street design. And I would say that a first step there is to look at the proposed zoning changes and see which ones are appropriate to which parts of the street. So before we even get to the design guidelines, we could say, like, for instance, North Main Street, this side of the street, these particular zoning changes might make sense. West side of the street, east side, you know, so you could go down and say, and and before we get to the design guidelines, we could sort of block out which parts are we could sort of match, mix and match which parts, maybe we end up with more than one zone or more than two zones on North Main Street based upon the depth of the lots or whether there's commercial behind it or residential behind it. So I think we should we need to.
My point was that 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 whole sort of sequencing and sort of the mechanical, not the mechanical, but the sequence of the discussions and deliberations and what you have before you go into a focus group in a forum in order to be ready for that versus what you do before you write zoning bylaws, that that's a whole process that there's a number of consultants out there that are very familiar with this corridor revitalization, as it's called. And Brian had a list of three consultants, and I had a list of four that I whittled down to three that are all possibly candidates for this work, although I will be very grateful to have the perspective of skilled architects and urban planners looking at the list too. But to hire one firm for that comprehensive view, and we pay them to do what we have the money to do, and if we need more, we find a way to get it. But they are going to understand the sequence of events because they would have done it, I found from my research, many times over for different towns. The same thing about a corridor revitalization with zoning bylaw changes and new design standards and full street visualization both sides.
Okay, so this is a great term that I, that, so corridor revitalization, I think, is a key way of looking at this. And so I guess Brian, at this point, you had a list of you were gonna show us something earlier about getting quotes or who, what the MAPC and using that as guideline.
Well, yeah, just kind of just showing what $10,000 can get us in terms of number of meetings, the number of hours in general. That that would be the only reason to show it because it's the only info, the only quote I have at the moment. So I can just show it very quickly.
We have about eight minutes left, I just want to say in this segment, so.
Sure. So Josh split this up into three different tasks, I believe, and I can make this a little bigger.
All right, I have to stop Cheryl, don't I?
I, it should have already happened. Is everybody seeing what I?
I see what you have, Brian.
Oh, I I can't stop Cheryl.
I don't know that you need to, Brian is.
Yes, but I can't see what Brian.
You can't see what I'm saying? Then you need to, that's odd.
Yeah, so.
Hit escape, I think, and then that takes it out of the full screen mode, and then you should be able to see it.
Okay, I will. Yeah, it's still, hold on a second.
Well, in the, yeah, in the meantime, so he's broken up to several different tasks. So task one is two meetings with the planning board, really discussing what then, you know, what the nature of, and helping to, you know, further define the zoning recommendations, really do what DM, you just talked about, which was getting out of the board, what really it needs to happen at the zoning level. So that would be two planning board meetings. Then there would be another forum. And then, and he said, and he said, obviously, it's really number of hours here, we can kind of tailor the scope if we wanted more one-on-one, you know, or one-on-seven kind of thing, like focus groups. And then he, task three was the final refinement to the zoning recommendation. So that, you know, we're between two meetings with the planning board, a community forum, and then another hearing to kind of further those recommendations as we lead right up to town meeting. That's 10,000. So that's just a rough, you know, you know, that's, these are, it's an estimate in terms of how fast that, you know, essentially four, four, you know, two meetings, one community forum and one hearing. So that's four meetings, that's $10,000. And a lot of that is not covered in just the money that I'm explaining, meaning if you look into those scopes, it talks about distributing materials, making printed materials and and doing some, some public relations activity as well. So it's, it's not really all covered under just like, oh, it's $2,000 and that's what it is. So that's kind of the the bulk estimate of what, you know, what we could do for $10,000 and what we could do between February and the end of June, which is what we were, we were looking at, because this money is our our budgeted money for the fiscal year, so it's, it's, it would end June 30th. And that's all I have.
Okay, so.
Would the next thing be that we would shortlist some people to bring in for interviews? I mean, we've got it down to like Brian's three names and three names that I found.
But Brian, the MAPC work would only bring us through zoning, right? We, there, it doesn't even start to talk about design guidelines.
No, but we could, we could, we could ask for that. I do know that there's, like DM said, we don't, $10,000 will not get us those, you know, three to four meetings related to community forums and public feedback, and then also be able to really fully, fully write design guidelines. That that was in order to get us over the goal line for the zone. So, yeah, so there certainly would be some design elements to the zoning, but not like the full design guidelines that we would have that we expect for this area.
Am I right, Brian, that if there's certain amount of money that if we don't use it by June 30th? We lose it?
Yeah, that is, that is correct. We should certainly, well, I mean, we, we plan to use this money for this specific purpose. That's what we, where we asked for it in our budget. So I do think we should use it before June 30th, and I think we can. Yeah, it's totally possible.
For using the money would be to hire MAPC to use up the $10,000 or to get some bids and launch a relationship with a consultant that can take us across the finish line and get their work done by the first, first chunk of their work done by June 30th.
Yeah, I mean, I, when it comes, I think really, yeah, the question really is if we were, if we were happy with or want to continue with MAPC, the the large, or I wouldn't say the benefit i- is that we can easily apply for district local technical assistance money to supplement that 10K. So when we do work with MAPC, that 10K might be 13K or 14K. And that's the benefit, is that the state funding that they get, they give out in the form of technical assistance.
Can you be more specific about what technical assistance is? I know we're short on time.
Yeah.
So instead of them giving us money, they just do the work. So instead of us paying, and instead of them giving us money to pay them, they just do the work in the form of technical assistance, and they're helping us, and instead of us paying them, there's just no money exchanged.
No, I understand about this sort of like being in kind.
Yeah, so the the technical assistance is just it's just what they do. So it's, it's, Brian explained to me, that's just the name of the funding.
Work. It's what MAPC does. They work, and they work through technical assistance to two cities and towns.
Okay, so that's just a way of describing their ability to provide services above what they're billing us for.
Right, because they're getting paid from the state to do that work. We're applying for, we would apply, so when we, when we say we want this $10,000 project, we're also applying for DLTA, District Local Technical Assistance. So then when they do develop a scope, they can actually develop it for a little bit more because they're using state funding for it.
So I think the the way forward on this, seeing as we have two minutes, is that the big unknown is how much this whole package is going to cost. So I can easily imagine it will cost more than that, twice as much as $10,000. I have no idea. So I think that the next step forward is to for Brian and I to sit down and to flush out the scope of work with everyone's input from this evening, and then send that out to a number of consultants and see what their quotes are. And then we can decide how to go from there. Does that seem reasonable? This just to move this forward. So I think the key, the key words that we're looking for are consultants who have corridor revitalization, urban design and landscape design, and they do public outreach and zoning, so the entire package, so.
And design standards.
Design standards. And so why, why don't Brian and I will get together and work on that? And then I think there's still time, if people still have other consultants they want to send in, do that, and then hopefully we can get this out within a reasonable amount of time.
So does everybody have the list of consultants? Brian put three in his memo, and there was three in my memo, plus MAPC makes seven.
Yeah, and does, has everyone seen those?
Read the list?
Yeah, because if I try to show anything, I'm sure I'll break my computer.
So there's RG Lathrop, there's JM Goldson, there's Gamble Associates, there's UTile, Civic Moxie, just kind of a funky name, and landscape, excuse me, agency, landscape and planning. Those are the seven firms that Brian, and then I did research to arrived at, and MAPC is included.
Okay. Cool.
Sorry. Sally, can you say the the name of the second one? I'll.
Absolutely. So the ones that were in Brian's memo for this evening's meeting were RG Lathrop.
Right.
And and then JM Goldson, who did our master plan, and then, and then Gamble Associates, and then the three that I came up with, and then also Mox, excuse me, MAPC.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all very much. And it is now eight forty, 7:46, so it is time to continue our hearing on the development at Ten Congress Place. We have with us a bunch of people. Let's see if I can get my screen to work. We've got a lot of people from the Admeliory here. We have Philip Chen, our design consultant. And I think that's, those are, those are the principles here. So I wanted to really quickly start out this evening by coming up with two things, which is a schedule for us to get to a decision, and so that is a time thing. And also a punch list in terms of what it, what are the, what are the minimal things that we need to have worked out before we can get to a decision to get to a meeting where we can make a decision. And those are, so we have, in terms of the schedule, we have said from the start that we wanted to get this decision or to reach a decision prior to the spring elections, so that everyone who is on the board and has been sitting through all these meetings will actually be able to vote. And so we will actually have enough people to vote. Our election is, I believe, let's see, the 19th or the 21st, I've forgotten of March. But the key is that we would hope to have a decision at least a couple of weeks before then in order to make sure that there is enough slack. So we're looking for a decision in early March. So that would be either the first or the eighth. And so if we work back, then there's a question of what is the schedule required for not VHB to go over final, so we're gonna need final drawings to send out to our other consultants like VHB and the design review committee, et cetera, in order for their review so that we will have those materials in, ready in time for our decision. So if we if we want to be nice and give everyone time to actually read it, we're looking at let's say something like the 8th or the 15th of February, that's the first to second week of February, and that would give consultants two to three weeks, depending upon when we get it, in order to make their to have their reviews for us. So that is our schedule. So we can add meetings in as required to meet our, what we need to do in order to get our work done. But I think we're looking at if there are any changes, major changes to blueprints or anything like that, they have to be, they have to be done within the next two to three weeks in order so that all the consultants have a chance to review them by our next meeting, or by, by early, by our March deadline. So any, so that's, that's my take on it. Anyone else on the board can open it up for a couple of minutes and talk about that for schedule?
You seeing hands, Dan?
I see hands now. Yeah, go ahead, Sally.
So my question is, when, when final drawings are submitted, and then we, they go by, like, say, February 15th, and then they go to a series, they go through a series of reviews by other outside consultants. And then they come back with, this is great, this should be addressed, this is great, this is great, this should be addressed. So those things that should be addressed become conditions?
I, that, it would, that would be my supposition, if Brian is still with us.
Yeah, I'm here. Yeah, that, that is how it's done here in Winchester, as, as well as in other cities and towns. Once we get to that, that level, you obviously could keep doing revisions and keep doing revisions. But usually it is based upon a condition, and then there might be a, a stock condition that we put in is that, you know, if it gets significantly altered from this point, then it could potentially go back in front of the planning board if something gets altered.
So.
Yeah, but sorry, Dan, but I think you're.
The articulation of those decisions will be very important.
Extremely.
Conditions, I'm sorry.
Yes, the can, the conditions are exact, the conditions are the crux of the decision, period. So they, they are very important. Yeah.
Oh, Brian, did you, were you noticing problems with my connection?
Yeah, it looked like, yeah, someone was dancing on the microphone, is what it sounded like, but I didn't know what that was. Anyway, back to you, Dan.
Okay. So any other, any other questions or concerns about schedule? We can get down to individual meetings after we get our punch list out, I think. But everybody okay? Okay.
So, yeah, Dan, so I, sorry, I, I, yeah, I didn't know who to make the co-host, but we have a number of people from Haseen Associates. David Haseen, David Tabenkin, Dylan Forster and Rob Quarker. I've made them all co-hosts because I wasn't sure who. Yeah, I'm gonna. And to drive. But anyway, Dan, I think it might, and might make sense for David to, to just co-host there and then drive for the presentation.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. The, the other thing I wanted, and I, I do want to speak with you folks, developer folks about schedule as well, I'm just trying to. One of the, one of the things that I want to jump in very quickly is no, maybe we can do this after your presentation. I think that might be better, is sort of a punch list of the final things that, that we need to solidify. So why don't you guys take over?
Sure. Ian, do you, did you want to say anything to start?
Well.
Just dive in.
Yeah, no, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and momentarily I'll turn it over to David Tabenkin and David Haseen. You're going to see how much work the design team has done in, in an attempt to translate all the messages from the board and the input also from a surprisingly quick and respectful rapport with Philip Chen. So we look forward, we think we're very close. We'd like to take your thoughts this evening in our dialogue and see if we can't incorporate those final draft views the next meeting, which I think, Mr. Chairman, is exactly where you're headed with this. How final it will be, we can discuss, but we're aiming for final.
Right, I just, can you just give me a quick idea of how long your presentation will, because I'd like to hear from, from Mr. Chen as well, and then.
I think we can.
I'm prepared to give it.
Yeah, I think we can keep it to 15 minutes.
Okay.
And before David gets started, I, I just want to say that that we have really taken the comments that we've heard to heart. We're very excited about what we're about to present to you. We think there are a lot of big improvements. We want to thank Phil Chen for the really, you know, exceptional dialogue that we've had internally. And, and we're, you know, still all ears, but we hope that that you feel like we are listening and that we're making some progress. And with that, I'll turn it over to, to David, who's really been, been working super hard on this these last few weeks. So, David. Thank you, David. So let me share my screen. Do you, do you see the PDF? Or no?
Yes.
Great.
Yep.
Go full screen. So what you're going to see is a, some additional material beyond what we sent as a draft on Friday. Some added drawings, some refined floor plans and some additional views. And we sent some of this upfront text ahead, just so you'd have a chance to take a look at this. But basically, we've sort of summarized what we've heard from the board. This is the basis of design, really, five stories, 3.0 F A R, locating the residential entrance at Mount Vernon and Commerce, Converse, commercial space facing both Mount Vernon and Mill Pond, and buy-in about residential live-work units that we proposed along the east facade. And this is really all in service of activating the ground floor. So that's the primary point. We heard that this needs to happen on all sides of the building. We heard that the idea of four elevations, each with somewhat unique character, responding to the different site conditions is important to develop, but we want to create some cohesion there. Develop the west elevation to soften the service aspects on Converse Place, make it a pleasant pathway to the water, and advance the design with materials, massing roofline and, and the things that will mitigate the scale of the building and also respond to the design guidelines. So what we're going to show you takes the, I think, a, a big step towards doing that, but there's, of course, more details that will continue to be developed. We've had an initial meeting and then two, a remote meeting and then two sit downs with, with Philip and Brian. As David said, very productive process. And this is just a sort of snapshot of a series of options, both in SketchUp and, and quick sketching that we've done to, to talk with Philip and Brian about different aspects of the building. So what you're seeing developed in SketchUp is sort of came after this, this sort of quick studies, and there was, this is just a selection of, of even more that were done. Some of the feed, key feedback we heard from Phil and Brian, which Phil has captured in his memos on the meetings, explore how to make the residential entrance prominent on the corner of Mount Vernon and Converse. This is particularly important to the developers. So we're going to show you some options for that, and that's something we'd like your feedback on. Emphasize the building base to balance the middle at Mount Vernon elevation, and really we've carried this around the building. Continue the scale and rhythm of ground floor openings all along Converse, so that it becomes really tied in with, with the rhythm of openings around the building. Provide active, transparent and lit spaces wrapping the northeast and northwest corners of the building to help activate Mount Vernon, and consider the prominence of the northeast corner as a gateway to downtown, which we heard was something that had sort of fallen away in our, our application scheme compared to our, our first iteration in 2020. So the current site plan shows the massing of the building. There's some slight modifications you'll see in the massing to how we're, how we're dealing with this overall footprint, but it's very, very similar to what we had in the application scheme with some minor refinements. Of course, the retail entrance, sorry, residential entrance is here, a retail entrance here, and along Mount Vernon. We're lining the two ends of the buildings, the primary facades with, with commercial space and live-work units on the east. And you'll see how we've started to carve away and step down on this east facade. This is a current iteration of the landscape site plan from Copley Wolf, so similar to concept to what they had previously generated, but this makes some adjustments with the refined geometry of the building. Some of the big, big changes are that, of course, we've discussed Converse Place not being a warmer, maintaining curbs and sidewalks with some planting and treating it like an extension of the sidewalk, creating continuity around this side of the building. And you'll see some changes as we zoom in here on, on how we're thinking about this open space, really capturing as much space as we can. And we, they have reintroduced some steps down to the water, which we had heard from the Conservation Commission is something that, that they were in favor of exploring. And it's just a zoomed in version of that detail. So the ground floor plan superimposed on the landscape. There's some refinement here, but essentially residential lobby with an entrance at the corner, commercial space along Mount Vernon with these curved corners, sort of easing, easing these corners of the building facing the pond and the pathway around the pond. We have commercial space at the south with the entrance facing the Main Street Bridge. And then we, we've, we've tried to really think about activating this facade as much as possible with the residential lobby, the comings and goings of people leaving their cars here, which we just pointed out is distinctly different from someone driving down a, a ramp. People are getting in and out of cars here, so there is activity. There's a residential trash room, an egress door, and then the electrical transformer and electrical switch rooms, which we've done some further coordination with EverSource on. We dug into the floor plans a bit to sort of do proof of concept that this width of building will work. We heard some feedback with concerns about that. So what you see on the second floor is just development of, of, it's starting to develop those floor plan layouts to really test out these particularly deep units and then one of the corner units. So these are one, one bedroom plus units. The plus means that there is a, a bonus room on the back. In this case, I think it's about an eight by 10 room that we acknowledge is not a bedroom. It doesn't have a window. Right now, it doesn't have a closet. It's essentially a flex space. It could be a den, could be a Peloton room, could be a study, could be storage. But it is, is a sort of bonus space that, that allows us to really use this depth and have some very nice living room spaces that can take both a proper lit seating setup and dining room. So we'll continue with this development and get into the three-bedroom units and the other two-bedroom units as we proceed. We have a total of 45 units now, including the live-work units on the ground floor. And I should say that these have individual entrances, slightly recessed to emphasize entry, large windows, and they are at grade. So there is no front yards here. We had received feedback about eliminating that, but just a more minor walk that connects out to the multi-use path. On the fifth floor, we're setting back on all sides. We've further developed the idea we had about accentuating repetitive volumes at the top floor that speak to the kind of rhythm and, and scale that one might see of traditional dormers. And each of these units has pretty significant outdoor space, which is really nice. And then we've also added reserving a space now, whether it remains in this spot, I think remains to be seen as we work through these layouts. But the idea is that everyone in the building benefits from an outdoor space and a common space with views up on that roof, with some views towards the pond. And some further iteration of the parking layout. So we've similar to the massing model views that we showed you last time, the, the massing has been refined in SketchUp and we're rendering this like you would, you would see a physical model. And these are some quick views just around the building to show the scale relative to other buildings in town, relative to Town Hall and its tower. And also demonstrate the sort of stepping down that we're now doing to three stories along the pond, which you'll see in the, in the street level views. So we'll now go around the building. I think we had added these notes in what we sent you on Friday. So there's a few points to make in each view. Mount Vernon Street, we've emphasized the base, middle and top, and we've done that by having some horizontal rig gatums that trace around the building. This one at the third floor roughly aligns with the top of the much taller floor-to-floor of the white building. And this really helps to emphasize that three-level scale. We brought down the bays on Converse Street, which had been up at the fourth floor to help mark that, that three-story scale. We're differentiating the windows from the base to second and third floors and fourth floor to help emphasize that sort of traditional reading of base, middle, top. And we'll show you a few options for the residential entrance. This one has a projecting canopy that wraps down Converse to signify that this is lobby space. Same scheme for for the canopy. It projects, it's got slightly rounded corners here relating to the rounded corners we've, we've added at the east side of the building. And a slightly different articulation of the building with some metal spandrels relating to the bays and differentiating this corner from the more solid second and third floor five bay volume. That's very traditional facade. We're proposing the retail entrance be emphasized at this important spot in the center of that facade. You can see the, the columns continuing down Converse with the openings. And when we develop the design of the lobby, this will be lit, it will be high quality. You'll really get a sense of activity within these four openings. This is the second scheme, which, which extends this brick reading of the second and third floor, projecting the corner, creating a, a slight overhang to mark the entrance. We're articulating it here with a cast stone so that it frames these windows in a, in a sort of monumental way over the entrance, but differentiates that corner and creates a little Juliet balcony at the top. And then another version where we're picking up on the language of bays along Converse, but turning the corner, chamfering this at an angle that's opposite this one and, and marking that there's something special here to differentiate from the retail frontage. This is a close-up view. You can see how we've creating this regular spacing of, of columns. The two garage entries are here, the two electrical room and transformer room entrances, whichever source requires very tall openings are beyond that, and then the retail frontage. So we, we think that this really mitigates the service aspect. I think also just the fact that there's this new wall here and that there's such character and then a sort of express, expressiveness of these bays facing towards the water on the short end really downplays the, the service aspect at grade. So the view from Mount Vernon, you can see how we, whoops, we have softened this corner, reintroducing a curve similar to what we had in some early development back in 2020. We then are stepping down the facade to three stories, keeping the, the townhouse rhythm that we had introduced in our application scheme, but really scaling those down, carving into the facade with some nice outdoor spaces to maximize the units to have those. So there would be a setback on the third floor and a setback on the fourth floor to create outdoor spaces. Some close-up view of those, that townhouse scale repetition. So each of these doorways would be an active entrance to a live-work unit, which also all have access within the building. At the second and third floor, recessed balconies, the third floor is actually open to the sky, and then the fourth floor has a balcony over this sort of mini townhouse unit. And then above that, at the fifth floor, these recessed bays create these repetitive elements, which we think are sort of akin to, not dormers literally, but akin to that sort of repetition on the skyline. And then you can see the curve wrapping to the south. So this is one of those areas, I think we still need some refinement, but the idea here is again that we have the three-story reading of these townhouses, townhouses at the live-work units, stepping back, and then stepping back. And then stepping back up to the scale of Mount Vernon Street at the pond, where there's more open space where the higher scale seems appropriate. And this inflected facade, which sets up the outdoor space. And again, larger windows at the ground floor for the commercial space with really celebrating the views of that corner. And this starts, you start to see the introduction of a bay on the southwest corner facing the main street bridge. This is that view flat on. And then the view coming down the curve of, of Converse from Main Street. So we've looked at a few options here. Again, we've brought down the scale of these Converse bays to create Juliet balconies on top. And emphasize this three story reading of this datum. We have the repetitive bays at the fifth floor with outdoor spaces between. And then this again reintroduces a, a curve that we had on a prior scheme, albeit it was, it was five floors then. So we brought it down to the scale of the building, still a very important iconic view from the main street bridge, but it's no longer the residential entrance. It's a retail entrance. So this would have signage, potentially an awning lighting, but still celebrating this view. And really offsetting that with a tower beyond. This is a step down version. So we wanted to see what happens if we bring this down to just a two floor expression with a, with a balcony for the unit above. You can see this starts to reveal a, a curve that we're trying at, at that corner. So that these two things, the prow at the fifth floor relates to the prow at the second and third floors. And then just trying a different shape, this one inflected above and projecting a kind of prow at the second and third floor to relate to some of the geometry of Converse place. So we like all of these, but it's something that, you know, we'd like some feedback on and we'll work with Philip also to, to develop the details of. And then this is the view backing up from Main Street Bridge, looking at the scale of this. Relative to the view of, of Town Hall. And back to, of course, what the existing condition is today. And then one of you, this is essentially the same SketchUp model. We've just rendered this in Enscape. So we can continue to do more of these. It's really helpful to get a bit more realistic view. The sun may not be, this is sort of late, late afternoon sun. And we, and we can work on studying that, but another view of this, which we think really captures the idea of the building, the inflected facade, the bays marking special spots. Denoting the first floor datum, the third floor and fourth floor daddoms with the setbacks above. And activating the skyline with a rhythm and scale that seems appropriate to the scale of the residential units. So these are, we, we'd love your feedback. We can flip back to any of these. These were some issues we had just trotted down to, to get some feedback on your feelings about, you know, the successfulness of, of reducing the massing particularly along the east facade, the mitigation of scale by the expression of the base middle top. How we're currently articulating windows, bays and dormers, which of course will continue to be developed and detailed. The expression of the four different facades, we think we've made them a bit more cohesive now, but still each is distinct. And then feedback on the, on the northwest and southwest corners are two things we need to hone in on. I will just say we, we, I can, we can refer to these if there's questions, but we added in here. You didn't see these on Friday, just the elevations of each side. So we can look more closely at scale, how we're articulating certain things and point out any areas that you feel or Philip, you know, wants to give us feedback on. I just point this out because it is helpful to see the whole facade along Converse flat to understand where these bays occur with commercial windows at, at one end and the lobby windows at the other end. And some information on height of the building to get up to the, this is saying 61.8, we're rounding up to 62, but that's where we are currently working with to, to try to get the structure to work. And just as a reminder from where we started, this is the application scheme. And this is where we're at now. So I don't know, Philip, if you want to jump in and
Yeah, actually.
Kick it off with some feedback or if anyone has comments for us.
So I want, first let me thank you for that. That was a really great presentation. Unfortunately, it took 20 minutes, not 15, but that's okay. Philip, do you want to jump in?
I'm sure I, I'd be glad to jump in now. Do you have Mr. Chair or, or if you all want to go first, would, would you prefer that I go in first?
Yeah, could you, why don't you go in first?
Sure. You know, I, I, I think one of the, the main things, and I think you will all notice, has been the biggest advancement of this design is really the articulation of what, you know, is read now is really a three story building with the top being the fourth floor and then the penthouse, which is really set back and, and as a penthouse. So I think in terms of how this building is read, I think that is the biggest change since the last scheme. And in order to really mitigate the scale, I think in what, what David is showing right now in the top left hand corner, I think that shows it the most in terms of how it fits in with the surrounding buildings. I think the other interesting thing now, if you look at the top right and the bottom left is understanding that there, there are two views of this building now. You know, when you're out on Mount Vernon, in the top, top left, you know, you're, you're really seeing the building up closer. And it's kind of constrained by the surrounding buildings. The two points where I do think you are able to see the building from further back without something in front of it are shown in the top right and the bottom left. And these are the two instances where the design team is, you know, showing the building. It's sort of, it's for full, full four story height with those rounded corners. I, I think it's an interesting play on the massing, but it is, it is the two places. I should say, these are the two places where I think the view can handle that height, the four story height. So I, I think that's been an interesting development too. So you can see how the design is going back and forth between the three story and the four story height. I think the elevation facing Town Hall has also been successful in terms of articulating the three story townhouse height, bringing the scale down. And having the visual interest up at the, at the penthouse on the fourth floor. I, I would just note, David, that in this rendering, it's showing those, that, that kind of surface flush with the, the, the penthouses above. And in the floor plans, I, I think the, the fourth floor floor plan would be different from the third and second floor floor plans. I think you just, that, that just needs to catch up with this model, but I think the model, I, I, I think again, it's successful in how it's setting back those, the, the spaces and even the articulation, the distinction of the materials, I think. David, you're describing that as a, as a copper colored material metal or something like that. I think that helps bring the scale down as well. I, I think the options around, you know, it would be great also again to hear your thoughts about the different options that the design team is showing on the northwest and this southwest corners. Again, these are the, the, you know, the kind of the most prominent corners. To me, when you look at those corners, the question I'm asking is, you know, are we reinforcing the three story height? Or are we reinforcing something taller? I think you're also seeing a kind of a play between, you know, the symmetry of these elevations and how they start to wrap the corner, which I think really think is interesting. How it may start symmetrical, but then it starts to morph a little bit as it, as it wraps the corner and takes on a different character. So I, I think there probably is a little bit more, you know, discussion around the cohesion, cohesion of the, of the, of the design, the whole building. But I think all the pieces are there. I think you, you know, asked the right questions. And it's a matter of turning the dial back and forth. Again, you know, the, the height, the mass, the scale. I think they're all really interesting discussions. That, that's, that's kind of my, my take on it. Mr. Chair, would you like to hear anything about specific?
Well, I think, I think it's, it's probably a good time to open it up to the board. So they can, I'm sure they're all bursting with questions and hopefully everyone will stick around to answer them. So why don't I, why don't I give everyone, the board members about three minutes apiece? So it's because we, we have only until eight 45 according to the schedule. So to be efficient, why don't we start off with, geez, I can't see anyone anymore. Kurt, do you have, you want to, do you want to start off?
Sure. Yeah, I can start off. I, I think I did want to, so first of all, thank you for, for this, to the design team and to you, Philip. And, and I know Brian was part of this too. I, I do frankly think a lot of these design changes, and I think Philip just articulated it really well, do address a lot of the concerns that I think I heard from a lot of the public comment and some of our prior meetings in terms of like massing and scale. So I, I'm appreciative of that. I, I think personally, I, I feel like this was successful in sort of bringing the scale of the building down. In a way that I think is pretty effective. So I, I, I really like a lot of what we're seeing here. I mean, I think in terms of specific feedback on the various options for those two corners. I mean, I think one question I would say I have for the design team is what they are contemplating for a material, for that green material, if it's a, like a sheet metal or if it is a copper, you know, what that material is, I think for me at least would matter, sort of on what direction we want to go. Cause I think you really want that material to have a richness. And I think if it's going to be wrapping some of those prominent corners, I think that would probably play into sort of my preference, I think. So that, that's at least one quick question I think I have, and I don't know if, if there's an answer to that or if it's sort of still in planning mode.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, we, we've, we've discussed some options. You know, zinc is always a nice option, which goes more gray for the copper color, pre-patinated copper. Very expensive, very lovely, but there are options to do a sort of, you know, aluminum panel with specialty paints that get metallic that, that really look like weathered copper. And, and maintain a sort of rigidity that, that actually copper wouldn't, right? So that's something we would look into and those are sort of where discussions have been right now. There's a lot, there's a lot of it. So that's the.
I would also just throw in that we've had some success on some of our projects when we have used a specialty paint on, on, on a metal panel of actually having two slightly, slightly different colors. So that when the panels get put up, the material looks more alive. And, and that has, and that's a little bit of a sort of secret technique of ours, but it has worked actually quite well. And that would definitely be something we could explore together with all of you as we get into the details more.
Great. Thank you. The, the only other comment I, I had is I, I also like on the Mount Vernon Street facade here too. I like the articulation between the third and fourth floors. Again, I think it again, just contributes towards that overall feel of bringing it down to the street scale. I also feel like the facade looks a little bit more traditional and a little bit more familiar relative to some of the other buildings in town, which I like. I really do think there's, as part of the design guidelines, I think we're trying to meld this into what's already in town. So I think having, you know, some key elements in the facade that, you know, resemble some of the older, you know, buildings that are original town, I think is nice. So I think that those are my only comments. I did want to make just one point that I think is related to the presentation. And the feedback that I think the team heard from the board, my own view is, I know the first point I think was they heard a definitive mandate from the board to proceed with five stories and a 3.0 FAR. And that's not what I heard from the board. I heard from the board like a willingness to consider those two things. But that actually, you know, adjusting either of those things down would actually help mitigate and solve for a lot of the concerns. But I know there's a reluctance to do that, probably just for economic feasibility, which I understand. I just wanted to make it clear that at least my own view is that I don't think anyone's saying that's what we definitively want. It's, it's willingness to consider it. And that's all.
Okay. Thank you, Kirk.
It's hard to follow Kirk because he's so eloquent. But I also agree that this, this presentation is, is seems like quite a lot of work. And you have been able to respond really sensitively to so many concerns over the past two years, I guess, is how long this application and pre-application has lasted. And I'm really impressed that you are able to respond to that many concerns and still hold a, a building together. And, and just have cohesion, to have, to have interest and connectivity when you walk around the building. So I, I think that that's a wonderful thing. I just wanted to go to the plan for a second and talk about the three bedroom again. And I know that we, we talked about affordability and I'm not talking about affordable housing, but I, I am talking about housing that's affordable. And I think that the three bedroom demographic would probably be people who are downsizing, yes, but also certainly families. And even within the building itself, I think that location matters and, and that, that affects costs. And I, I would, I'm a little concerned that all the three bedrooms are on the, probably the, the highest end sort of corner, like the, the, you know, and, and that, that kind of a, that becomes a little bit more unattainable for a lot of people. So if there could be variety, and that was one of the, you know, the reasons why we would, we would give a 3.0 FAR was just a variety of housing. And so I think that, that would help a lot. And I, so that was one point, and I guess the Housing Board could probably chime, chime in on that. As for the building, I think the corners are lovely. I think the, the one on Converse and Mount Auburn, I'm, I'm sorry, Mount Vernon. The one, I think option one, yeah, it, it's, it's so, it's, it's so nice that the, the material comes to the other side and it's, um, but within this option, instead of some of the other options that were shown, I think this is a little bit more elegant and less loud. And like Kurt was saying, a little bit more traditional. And so that, that was one of my options, you know, my favorite, I would favor this one. As for the banding, I think the third, the third floor banding, that was an interesting thing to tie things together. And I, I noticed that there was some, you know, connectivity between the material here and the copper or the zinc. And to the brick was, I don't, I don't know, it seems to, to the Juliet balcony, it just seems a little bit. Could probably use a little bit of work to connect, but it's, it seems a little bit harder to transition. And on the east side facing Town Hall, I, I really, yeah. I, I admire the sensitivity and, and bringing it to be very light. It feels really light with all the articulation of the roof and the inset of some of the balconies. And this kind of almost a paper facade of, of that wall to the third floor. But that again, that third, for the third floor horizontal banding seems to break up. And I, I feel like that, that seems, I don't, I don't know if that's the way that the model was built, but it, it doesn't seem to connect as well. And it seems a little bit too broken up to me. And one last thing at the corner of the retail corner. I think the three story copper looks the best of the three, if I were to just immediately gut choose. And it, I can, I can see it withstanding that corner and that kind of distance and seeing the landscape plan too. It seemed like there was a lot of plantings around that area too. So it would even soften that up a lot. So a good, I'm great job. I think it looks good.
Okay. Thank you. Sally. Everybody's been around four minutes. So that's, that's close to three.
So I see lots of really interesting changes in this set. And just starting with the screen that we're on, which is option three, I actually preferred option two, if you switch to that. Because it helps to reinforce that three story messaging with regards to the mass of the building. And so I am happy to see this, this commercial side of the building, this riverfront side of And, um, so I am happy to see this, this, um, commercial side of the building, this riverfront side of the building. Well, pond front in this case, um, be, um, celebrated. Um, and I like the two-story version going to the front entrance screen, um, or screenshot. Similarly, I like the carrying up of the copper or faux-copper, whichever. In the previous image that you just, option two. Option three.
One, two, three.
I think this, the three, and actually, when I first looked at this, I thought option two. Let me so switch, switch back to that, but in in both cases, we're reinforcing that three-story. Level, I think option three celebrates more the entrance, the commercial, I mean, excuse me, the residential entrance and along Mount Vernon Street. Um, so option three is the one that I think tells the story more and softens the edge of this corner. Um, and then going along Mount Vernon Street, I know that you've got one retail entrance, I guess in the center there. Um, but it occurs to me that, um, it might end up programmatically that there be multiple retail entrances along Mount Vernon. Similar to the way we have multiple retail entrances across the street, closer to the Rotary. Along Mount Vernon, not just one big, you know, like Gap store or whatever. I just don't know how that would work here. I I'm not a retail consultant. With regards to the top floor, I. Still, the fifth floor, um, I still really respond, um. Just, I'm not just not happy with the boxiness of the top floor. Ex protrusions, I'm not sure, you had an architectural term for them, but they're very hard and very boxy, and I know that. That from one perspective, you could say this is a celebration of union with the sky. To me, they just feel very harsh. They feel very, um, sort of. Industrial or institutional harsh. Um, and as you go around the building, um, you see these. Fifth floor boxes, I would like to see them softer. I would like to see them. With more of an expression of a mansard style on the top floor of the building. I think that the massing mitigation, um, will be helped by finding some way to soften these boxes. Not make them so square and not make them so vertical. Um, so that's, those are, those are some of my points. Um, the other thing I have is I understand that the the, because of the transformer, the first floor needs to be raised from. Uh, fourteen feet to sixteen feet, is that right?
That's right.
And so when you look at the floor-to-floor heights. As you go up, I think I heard you say that the whole building now is at sixty-two feet, eight inches.
Where it's, where it's sixty-two, just sixty-two feet to the top of the roof.
Right, so when you, um, add the mechanical screens, which are, I don't know, four, five, six feet. And then inside those screens, you have another three or four feet of height of the mechanicals. Depending on where you are, you're going to see the sixty. Two feet, eight inches, plus potentially another, I don't know, eight inches, uh, eight feet of mechanicals. So the whole thing comes up to about seventy and, um. Um, it's just starting to look like a really tall building to me, again, still even more so. Um, and I really, really would love to see one floor taken off the top of this building and have the current penthouse floor. Be the fourth floor of the building and modifications made that would. Um, again, celebrate the relationship of three plus one. Which is the three, the traditional three-story buildings, which I think you've done a good job of of evoking or invoking, excuse me. Um, references to other three-story buildings along the streets in Winchester. Um, but this top floor, now we're going up to. Just seventy feet.
You're you're at five minutes, Sally.
So I think those are my, those are my, um, some of my points anyway. Um, I I'd like to really open up the discussion to taking a floor off this building. So that we can celebrate the architecture that you've done so far, which has really come a long way. Um, and celebrate the open spaces that you've created at the ground plane and with all the balconies. Um, and not have so much mass to mitigate, to be honest with you. I mean, if the mass was reduced, it would require less mitigation.
Okay, thank you, Sally. Let's see, Cheryl.
Okay. Sorry, thank you. Boy, we've caught, we've covered a lot of ground and I really, um, I really appreciate all the comments, um, that we've had. I. I want to say that one of the things that stood out for me in your presentation, David, was this narrative about cars pulling in. Um, now that we've changed to a sidewalk version of Converse. I think that that's really successful, um, to to hear the idea that you. You pull in, not as though you're a car heading to a ramp, but rather you're pulling in like you're parking. And I think that's a really good way to to think about this being, um. Uh, a street or a a not main street, but a side street that really can have. A rhythm that is, uh, not like Mount Vernon, so thank you. I also feel like the, when I saw the first floor plans or the site plan. There was articulation in, even in the plan. That, like the other buildings in town, that we, that are beloved as opposed to the the boxes. That that we're actually seeing from, all the way from plan to the, now, the outside of the building. How you've really, um, taken on, um, constructing something that's. This is not, this is not cheap construction. This is something that has. That has a lot of detail to it, um, that will, will withstand, you know, um. Being a building, a well-designed building, not just a condo. You know, building that someone's, that someone's putting up, so thank you. I do have a little trouble, um, with, and I agree with. Cheng that, uh, some of the, the detailing that you're going to have to work on from, you know. Going forward is is still a little, um, chunky, especially actually in the fifth floor. Um, and that kind of, uh, rings back to Sally. There's. I do, um, like this particular, um, entry the best. I do like the three-story. Commercial, um, rounded, commercial entry, um, at the water. But I think that when I'm looking at taking them down to three stories, um, if you go to, um, the pond view. Yeah, if we, if we hit that, what happens above is something that happens when you start carving away. At the the brick, which I associate with, you know, our more, um, sort of. Uh, formal brick buildings in the town, when you start to carve away like that. It just, it starts to look. It it creates a darkness in the building. I like all of your, your articulation, but, um. I like this, I like the third piece on the curve here. And then if you go around to the Town Hall side, I think, yeah, that's. Sorry, that's the one I like the most. And then on this side, I think these. Um, balcony exterior spaces that are still in the fourth floor brick area. That are pulled away, they they seem to have these giant sort of beams across the top of them, but. But I don't.
Think that's the sketch-up model, isn't it, David? I noticed that before.
Are you talking about this?
Yeah, that, yes.
Yeah, that kind of piece and then the one above it as well. I mean, I just, I I think those are just things that get worked out as you.
Sure.
As you move along, but I.
Just to explain that move, what we, we, we originally studied this as sort of four, five individual volumes and then. We we introduced that section of wall, so it really felt like these are big openings cut away to try to quiet this a little bit and make it cohesive. Um, but, you know, I I I agree, we we can look at the articulation of that and it might be the. Starting and stopping of that pattern that, that.
Well, I kind of felt.
Typical to to what we were trying to do.
Yeah, that was the piece that I was thinking. I don't know that I really. I am convinced of this being the townhouse sort of facade because of that. So, um, and I also wanted to know a little bit more. About, um, the live workspaces on the first floor.
Sure, you're, you're at five minutes.
Okay, I'm, um, I'm good. I think those are, those are just things that will get developed in the future, otherwise I'm. I think I've expressed the options that I like the best.
Cheryl, thanks a lot. I I just also want to note that on the, some of the points that you mentioned, we we have. You know, there's so many options, but we have also explored the idea of of breaking that line, breaking the townhouse line. And instead of having a gap, sort of pulling the balcony, having a balcony there that's pulled back a little bit, which actually would be a nice amenity. It's a little bit more balcony for the units that are behind it, so that's certainly something that we could look at and then. The flanking, um, sort of pavilions, um, that you mentioned are also something that I think, um. Are very actively understudied, so thank you for, yeah, those. Um, so thank you for, thank you for pointing those out. I think that, um. Those are those moments where we're trying to have all the pieces kind of come together and, and yeah, that has only been like a week or two, so but we would, you you pointed. Right at those things that we're we're eager to dig into a little bit more, so thanks.
No, but excellent work and, um, David, your narrative was really, was, it was wonderful, right on.
Um, okay, so I'll take a couple of minutes and then, uh, we'll talk about punch list and schedule again. So can we go back to the residential entrance, please? So first off, this is, this is, I really love the the improvements to the design. I think they do a really great job of bringing the 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 visible mass down. Um, so I think really, really nice work. So for this one, um, I prefer option one. I think as was pointed out, this gives it a very nice elegant look and it really sets us, it sets aside at the street level that this is a a special entrance. As we, um, one of the things I noticed, I think on on Converse Place, you've done a great job of of of. That splitting between the three and third and fourth stories. And I was wondering if on Mount Vernon, if you could take that that fourth story and push it back. So that it's the same face as the two corners. I don't know if that's, it it seems that might give you a little more. Show a difference between three and four stories more, it's just a thought.
Yeah, we we could, we could look at that. I think we, we, it's funny because we, we thought of this and at one point thought what it might do is join this entire.
Yeah.
Facade, which might make it look bigger, but we actually didn't push it, but not rather than smaller.
Yeah, understood.
It'll be shorter but wider, but we we could study that quickly and see.
So I don't know which way your 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 presentation goes. I'm, but if we go down Mount Vernon, the commercial entrance, I'm I'm. I think it almost gets lost in the front of the building and as much as I really love that.
Down number here.
Yeah, yeah, it almost, so I'm trying to think of as as someone walking down the street, looking for the commercial entrance. I, there might be a, there might be some, um, sign or something up there. But I I really like this, this, this rounded corner, as much as I love those round, that rounded thing. It might make more sense of the commercial entrance there, just because it is another. You know, um, highlighted entrance to the building, but that was my concern there. I I agree that, um, these transitions around the corner are kind of, they they look a little awkward and, uh, I don't, that's. You guys can fix that, I'm sure. The third, the the third story sort of transitions up there. Um, they seem to go up and down, but you already, you've heard about that, so you know about that. Um, if we go on to the.
One question about the, uh, commercial entrance thing, because this is something that's been on my mind and. I was listening to you guys talk a little bit about the commercial revitalization. I think that we do think it's very possible that there would be two commercial entrances. And I think that our recommendation, if there were, would be that one would be centered on the facade and then the other would be on the corner. Um, I think that the question of the corner entrance to me depends a little bit on like what the use is, especially if there's one tenancy. And whether that's that it's going to be, uh, if if it was a restaurant, for example, I think the corner entrance would make a lot of sense. But if it was a tenant that was trying to sort of piggyback on the energy of Mount Vernon Street as sort of like a neighborhood Main Street. Then it might be better in the middle, but I think that we would make provision for both, um, in our design.
Yeah, that sounds great, yeah. Thanks for thinking about that. I just want to keep going because I'm over my three minutes. Uh, on this side, I I really like the idea of that open, um, air for the. For the balconies there, um, as long as it doesn't turn into a big chimney for these folks. I I kind of share Sally's concerns about the blockiness of that upper structure. I think the building is, it has a real nice. Organic feel to a lot of it, and then it hits the 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 upper structure. And it, there's, it's a little jarring, so if you could somehow soften those edges, I think that would help. Um, as we keep walking around the building, um, towards. Yep, so you guys know, you've got it, you know, you've got to join those, those, those two views together. Um, on the, on the, on the ship's prow over here, as it were. I like the three-story version of, I like this particular option, um, the option where it's shrunk down to two. It almost, to my mind, it looks unfinished. It looks like you forgot to do something there and then you just put something across. So that's just me, but I think the third story really, uh, it. It doesn't look like there's a piece missing. I like the articulation you've done on Converse Place. Um, I'm really interested in seeing what you're going to do to those, um, service entrances for EverSource, so they don't just look like. Um, you know, metal garage doors, which someone will graffiti. I'm sorry, I hope they don't do that, but yeah.
Some, some sort of decorative metal.
Yeah, yeah.
One thing that we do need to contend with is that ever, we're still working this through with EverSource, but the, what they're ask is. Is that rather, in addition to having a fifteen-foot ceiling inside, they actually want a fifteen-foot door. Which then breaks this line up to here, which means we would probably have to pull these two up. To start, to start, so we've got to work through that and see, see what we can do with them.
Okay, um, so, well, I've, I will stop there. So I think, um, so the question, so I, great job, I think, moving forward. Um, the question now comes down to, um. Are there any, uh, do you folks need any more input from this board? Um, before we jump into things like, um. Scheduling and minimal, or what I'm calling the punch list.
I think the punch list would be very helpful, Mr. Chairman, and, um, your guidance. Um, it, are are we all clear on our, I I, I'm hoping we can be clear about what your guidance is. I I don't know if you do straw votes or whatever. At the moment, I think there appears to be a majority for this view that we're seeing. I think there's a majority for option number one on the main residential entrance, but I just. Ask your indulgence, if you can, i- if the board can tell us what these are doing, then we can.
Uh, let me, let me actually, uh, D F, for your benefit, just make a stab at what I think that we heard. And so that you can react to that a little bit. I think that, um. That around the, uh, there was appreciation for this, uh, the three-story, um, uh, expression and a sense that we need to. Explore that three-story expression, particularly as it comes around the corners and resolve. Um, as some of the, let's call them jangly bits, as they sort of come around the corners. And, um, as far as the, uh, corners themselves on the northwest and southwest, the. Uh, I I heard more of a consensus for a quieter, um, uh, entrance that brings some of the metal into the entrance. For the, um, lobby entrance and then a a preference for the integrity of the three-story expression. Um, on this side, um, although we can certainly, you know, keep other options alive, I think, um.
Three-story expression, sorry, David, of the copper.
Of the copper, yes, thank you. Um, I think that on the, uh, fifth floor, there was a clear, uh, ask about our possibility of. Softening or shaping some of the harder edges, um, of some of the, um, the, the. Uh, dormer-like, um, elements that we have, and I think that we can absolutely do that. Um, by the way, I think to, uh, Sally's concern, I think that we're also going to be exploring ways to. Um, recess some of the mechanicals over fifth floor corridors and other things like that to mitigate. Um, the height of the mechanicals, that's something that we need to get a little bit further in the design in order to do. The height of the mechanicals, that's something that we need to get a little bit further in the design in order to do. But we don't, I, I'm, I have a personal, everyone in my office knows I have a huge aversion to seeing mechanicals and mechanical streets. So we're going to do everything we can there. And lastly, I think that on the townhouse side. There was, and I'm talking about the architectural commentary, on the townhouse side, the, to explore. Removing some of the chunkiness from some of the, what I'll call spandrel elements. That we have on that facade, which we're happy to look at. I also took note of each thing's very, I think thoughtful comment about the three-bedroom units. And making sure that, that, that they're attainable, or at least one or two of them are attainable. So that's something that I think we can absolutely look at. And I'm sure I missed something, but I thought I would just try and, you know. David, did I, was there something that, that you heard as well?
You caught everything that's in my notes.
Well, almost everything except what's in my notes to Mr. Chairman is the height of the building. We are affirmatively five stories. Passing, we are affirmatively a 3.0. I mean, that's where we are now, so.
Well, I, I think.
I mean, obviously aspirational.
I, I, I don't, this is, again, I think we're, we're, we're moving into a line where we, we're not, we, we essentially make a this. That's a decision for. You know, I, I, you know, I'll be honest, I'm not sure exactly where we, when we start making definitive statements like that. I have a feeling that that definitive statement will be a yes or no on the final design. I don't think that there's any time between now and beginning of March to start lopping off floors. I just, you know, that's, that's a, a large, I think that. You know, that's, that's.
I think most, I think most of the comments were directed in, in. At how we can further shape and soften the fifth floor, not all the comments, but. Most of the comments were around that notion. So if that is in fact, the consensus, then I think that sort of. Helps move us along.
Sally, I see you have your hand up.
Right, I want to say that I agree with Kurt that the slide that said that there has been. An instruction to proceed with a 3.0 and a five-story design is not accurately stated. There was an instruction to continue to explore a 3.0 and a five-story design. But with.
And we will change that. And, and, but, but, you're right, and we will make the modification to that so that. That representation isn't misinterpreted by others.
That's very helpful. And, and I also want to say that the floor, floor heights on the building. And this is another whole layer of detail that we haven't talked about. The floor to floor heights on the building are driven on the first floor by EverSource. On the second and third floor by sort of industry standard eight feet, 10-inch floor heights for a floor. And on the fourth floor, the floor-to-floor height increases over that. So eight, 10, eight, 10, 11, eight, and 12, eight. And I would. Say that to further mitigate this impression of scale on this building. That maintaining the 10-foot eight floor height throughout the height of the building above the 16 feet is something that will be necessary. Given the EverSource demand that we add two feet to the, the expressed height of the first floor. I also want to say that it's really, really important that when we look at our perspective views. That the perspective lines from one building to the next building line up. And that we don't have, for instance, an elevation line. And this is based on the site sections, site, site cross-sections, but also the perspective views. That those, just those vanishing point lines must absolutely align from one building to the next. Such that it doesn't make the foreground building look larger or smaller, or the subject building look larger or smaller. The technical accuracy in those.
We are set back. This building is set back two feet back from the facade of the adjacent buildings, so.
I don't see that on the site plan. I'm sorry, David, that's useful information. I'm sorry to drive the meeting over. I really apologize.
So that's something we heard early on. This is a two-foot.
So can you go to the street views, the perspective views from the street? Because I'm not sure that.
The sidewalk here, the sidewalk here is wider than it is here.
Okay.
The vanishing points still are to the same perspectival vanishing point. But it's just to say that this facade is slightly back from.
I just want, I just want to emphasize because we heard this comment before and I'm happy, we would be happy to go through it with Phil. But I think there's a, a, a bit of a misunderstanding because. These are actually taken, constructed from live computer models and overlaid on, you know, photography and so forth. So they are. They are completely industry standard in terms of representation. There is nothing manipulated or. Or the hand of the designer in this, these are actually generated from the three-dimensional. Model mimicking the human eye and all of that. So I know that.
I think also the two-foot setback is a very important piece of information that I wasn't factoring into my visual analysis.
Okay, great.
It's helpful, super helpful.
Okay, I would like to, so I, in, in my, in my opinion, I think. David has seen, one of the Davids, your, your, your summary of what the board was discussing. I think that was pretty thorough. Any of the board members think that something was missing or they want to add to that? Of course.
If it's Ben, can we might take them to that slide, please?
Which slide is?
Yeah, which slide at the end?
I believe it's last, isn't it?
Oh, well, the last one was discussion.
There, there was just one more point of discussion and maybe this goes to the punch list, but there is some question about the retail, the commercial. Or the retail entrance, or the, the Mount Vernon commercial entrance, both the number and location.
Yes.
I, I think the only thing that I would add is that, you know, just in terms of, for Phil and Ryan and, and our teams. Headspace, I think that, and to me, DAB, your schedule, I think that we are very happy to go back and. Massage these items, knowing that a few of them might not get completely resolved because we still have to design the building in detail. But I think that we could come back to you pretty quickly. With some massaging of the items that we just talked about to at least. Confirm that we are moving in the right direction on those items and. And I would, I would hope that at that point, we would have enough of a blessing to. Take it to the next step and have it run through your consultants and your team and, and, and all the rest of it. Knowing that, you know, we still have to, we still have work to do. We know this is, we're still in SketchUp, so. But that would be my, my hope, my ask, I guess.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, what's important, I think for the board to recognize is that. If this gets approved, there is still considerable design work that will be going on. So what we're looking at is, I think, a, a, a proof of intent. To the point where we know where this is going and that we are comfortable saying with, you know, continuing to involve. Mr. Chen in this process that we are going to continue to improve the design, but at least we all agree that it's going in the right direction. And that there are no major surprises coming up. I think that's pretty much, I hope that's where the board is on this. But the, the punch list I was looking at is something I drew up with Brian, who hopefully is still with us. In case he needs to revise what I'm saying is that.
I am here.
Excellent. So, so the, the key thing I was, was to, we wanted to, to nail down the location of all the entrances and their uses. And I think we have done that. So that one's off the list. The garage location, I believe, is pretty well fixed. I, I think that the board seems to have, have felt that you. You're dealing with the, with the, the complexity of, of Concord Place and its pedestrian feel. Pretty well. We, the other things on here that we have are height of the first floor transformer, which you're still working out in terms of how that's going to affect your door height. So that's still an unknown. With a, a really big thing that needs to be worked out are staging restrictions. As you know, this is going to be a very difficult place to construct because of restrictions on Mount Vernon. So I believe Brian has reached out to start that discussion, but that's an important thing we need to get done. Though, before our decision time, landscaping, I think. You've got the, the, the location of the building pretty well down. I think, I'm not sure what more needs to be done. We definitely need to get something. Out to our design review so they can look at the landscaping. I think they've already seen what you've got now, if there are any more refinements.
And, and I would suggest that we maybe come back the next time with our landscape architect, so that if you have any specific comments that they can. Hear from you directly since they'll be relatively subtle. I think, by the way, the change to incorporating more green space and sort of engage the building more is a big win for the town. And I, I, I think that that's a, a really positive development, but. If you do have comments, maybe you could think them through, pass them to Phil and Brian, and then we can ask them to come to this. Important next meeting.
Right, that's, thank you. And then I think the last one I have on my list is unit layouts, and I think you have begun to, to, to. To hone in on those. But I think we want, I'm not sure. I know that you still have work to do on them and so I'll just leave it at that, but I think that's, we pretty, we, we do want to have a firmer grasp of what the units will look like. We know that there are, Sally Pasternas part of a packet this evening, the DHCD requirements. One of the conditions, of course, will be that all the affordable units, the digital affordable units will meet the XCD requirement. So that's kind of. All of that stuff will be encompassed in whatever decision is made. So I think we, we have. So you're familiar with all of those, I'm sure. So, so those are on my, that's what Brian and I came up as a punch list. Any other things that the board wants to have or that you folks out in Abner Miliora have that you think are important?
Yeah, but I just want to follow up on the one thing about the DHCD. What I was really unclear about is. Whether a building that has affordable units in it can have plus ones. Knowing that, or imagining, I don't know anything. I, I wonder if the DHCD, when they come to review the approval of those units in the building. Which are selected to be the affordable units, which I guess would be somewhere around six right now. If there's a plus one in one of those units, would the DHCD say it's not eligible because they don't. Want.
Sally, could I respond to that?
Oh, yes, please do.
Yeah, I think it's a quick response. It's very quick response. First of all, we're working, of course, with the partnership. And second, we can take off the plus by simply not building the wall. So it's very simple to make these just a one-bedroom. It doesn't have to be a one-bedroom plus. We just don't put in that wall. So it's a very simple thing to do. That wall could also be a half-height wall. It could be a glass wall. It could be many different things. But it. Yeah, our spaces are not necessarily plus ones.
Yeah, that's really helpful for us to see the floor plan. So thank you.
Sure, of course.
Yeah, and I just want to emphasize the how, you know, we do a lot of housing. And how important those spaces are. What's really, what's really great about the plus-one space is that, first of all, in a world of Zoom. Where you might be a couple living in a one-bedroom apartment. The fact that there's like a Zoom room is become extremely important for the home office potential. And it's also becomes a transition for a couple with a small child. Gives them an opportunity to have, you know, a few months before they have to move into, you know, a new situation. So. There are beyond the obvious ability to use it as storage or a place to put in your Peloton or whatever. There are actually real lifestyle benefits that are associated with these units that help. Affordability in the sense of transitioning, you know, as being like a stepping stone. In some cases to families that might then grow in, in your community. So. It's just something I wanted to put out there because it's, it's become an important feature in homes to have that nook for the desk, for the Zoom, for the this, for the that.
Oh, and I, David, I want to say that I totally agree with you. I just didn't want any of the units that had the plus one to be disqualified from being potential DHCD. Authorized affordable units, but I think.
Yeah, no, that's a good point.
The value of a plus one is huge. I agree.
And we can, I, I think we can, we can work with Housing Partnership Board, which. To, to figure out that, if that's an issue.
That, that was my whole thing. Thank you so much for that.
So any other things that the board, I mean, so let me see, the next time we, we, we meet. We will have revised, some sort of revised design. We will have landscape. And hopefully at that point, we will have designs which are. Which we can make immediately available to various reviewers and consultants. So they can give us our final, their final assessment part of mid, beginning of March. Is there anything else that the board needs? On that punch list in order to make their decision? That's what we're really coming down to is, we need to, what, what, what is the complete set of information that we require in order to, to make a judicious decision?
So differentiating between conditions and final approval. I mean, I know one condition is the Conservation Commission and another condition is the Design Review Committee.
So the CONCOM has their own. I mean, they, their decision is independent of ours, I think. Brian, can you chime in on this?
Yes, that is correct. They need to, they need to obviously drive, but typically the CONCOM and in this situation as well. They're not making any final decisions until that kind of footprint and everything is kind of finalized. And once they have that, then they can put their condition. We would obviously put some type of condition that it's, even though they're totally separate, what we've done is that, you know. Kind of over-belt and suspenders saying something like, you know, corresponds to everything that is in the, the NO, the. Order of conditions for the Conservation Commission. I believe we've done conditions like that, but it's not really saying anything, to be honest, because it still needs to be. It's really the Conservation Commission's order of conditions that, that governs it. Us saying that, yes, it has to do it. It's not a, is not a huge condition, in my opinion.
It doesn't add anything because the project has to conform to that anyway.
Correct, you know, it's, it's referencing it, but that, that's it.
Yeah, so I, I, I guess the point I'm trying to make, Sally, is that we don't need to wait on the CONCOM's list of conditions. In the sense that their conditions are of equal weight in terms of what's going on.
My, my perspective is possibly aligned with that, which is that our approval of a final comprehensive permit would be. Dependent upon Conservation Commission approval of every aspect of the project. And that all concerns of the Design Review Committee would also be incorporated into the final plans. I think, and, and obviously there's other things like the Housing Partnership Board. So that's, I think that's, when I think about conditions, those are the things that come to mind.
So why don't we set aside some time, we, we, we vastly overrun our time this evening, but I think it's important. Sorry, Brian, this was supposed to be our time for your review. I think that the board will have to make a list of the conditions that. That we want to have, at least to, to reference other boards' conditions. And. And there is standard language that we've had in previous decisions that we can bring in. Things like. Review of materials during the project, building a, a, a display wall or things like that to look at how the materials. Are, those are pretty much standard conditions and I'm sure that we can get help with those. Anything else that the board would like to see?
Dave, I do want to raise the question of the digital model, which was something that I thought we were going to see this evening. I guess it's premature, given the.
I thought, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that the digital model would be. Made based on our comments this evening so that everyone would see. So that everyone would see it after. Just because the model, that was my impression.
Yeah, I'd, I'll just to say briefly, so I think the idea was that after this meeting, there was going to be some revised drawing. That boards and committees and others would be able to react to. We would then be able to develop conditions, or, or not. Meaning that we would be able to come to a decision of some kind based upon these revised drawings. So Design Review, Historical Commission, they would each have their own comments, they would bring them to the table, or send them, they would send them to us. And then, then we would be able to, or the planning board would be able to agree or disagree with, with those, with those conditions.
Without the benefit of a, of a digital model in that process?
No, we would have the digital model, but since the idea is that the, 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 the design as presented as tonight. Has obviously, is going to undergo some amount of change, which everyone agrees will happen, hopefully, by the next meeting. And so that design is what should be released, because that's the one that everyone will be basing their opinion on.
I see that now that there's changes to be made prior to a digital model being released, but at the time that it would go to the other committees. Design Review, Conservation, Historical. I would think that having the digital model, the fully manipulable 3D model. Is something that those committees would want to have as part of their decision-making process. And of course, for Conservation, they have overarching concerns with, you know, the water and so on.
I, I think, I think we were agreed on that, so I, I, I hopefully that, that, I know, I think that's what we discussed last time. But I think, I think that's the, that was the agreed-upon path. So if the board doesn't, if anyone else on the board has nothing to say, then. Admeliora, are there things that you really think should be on the punch list that we missed?
I don't want to speak for all my colleagues, but I think we're good, thank you very much, I think that's a very complete list. And we'll be coming back to you, we greatly appreciate your, your input. And I think we are, you know, with your help and, and your consultants and Brian, we are making significant progress. Very proud of where we are.
Excellent, then what is left to us this evening is to set a time certain for our next meeting. And if future follows past, we are looking at a meeting in two weeks. Which is on February the first, if I can read my calendar correctly. So I would entertain a motion to post, to continue this meeting. On February the first, twenty-twenty-two, at seven-fifteen.
I'll move it.
And do we have a second?
Second.
And let's do a roll-call vote, please, Kurt Spring.
Hi.
Sally Dale.
Hi.
Eicheng Scott.
Hi.
Cheryl Wolf.
Hi.
And Dejiras's I as well, so thank you very much, everyone, a really impressive work you guys have done. Thank you, Philip Chen, for your input, it's extremely valuable. And I hope you guys have a great, busy two weeks, because I'm sure we will.
Oh, I'm sure we will, and I just want to say thank you, and I also want to say, I, I hope this helps. But I just want to say that it has been a real pleasure working with Brian, if he's having his review. I want to say that it is a real, it has been a real pleasure working with him, he is a great advocate for your town. And I work with many towns, and Brian is incredibly professional and respectful, and it's been, he's a great ambassador for Winchester. So I, I just want to take that opportunity to say thank you. Well, thank you all very much.
And thank you very much, we feel that way about Brian too.
Thank you so much.
Feel better, Brian.
So at this point, we have fifteen minutes left in our meeting, I don't think we're going to have a chance to. Move into executive session, I think that would be far too little time to start talking about this, so.
It would be unfair to Brian.
It would be unfair to Brian, Brian wouldn't be in on this portion anyway. Why don't I go through what, what typically we would be doing for the new members on the board? So we have, you've all received last year's review, which includes a set of goals that, for the, for the new, for the next year. Which would be twenty-twenty-one. So what we would be doing is looking at what those goals were, and. The practicality of actually accomplishing those goals, given the last year. And then we would, so that's, I think, if we, if we set up a time for next time, we will make sure that we block the timeout. And don't allow any other things to get in the way.
So, even though I'm not even supposed to be here, but technically, we haven't gone into executive session yet, but. As crazy as this sounds, I would say that there are, there's fourteen minutes left, and I would say. Even starting it, you can find that these meetings just get away from us. Fifteen minutes is probably better than nothing, in my, in my opinion, in my opinion, but I'm, I'm gonna duck out. I, yeah, I'm, but I, I will give you, well, first of all, I guess I will.
Make me host.
I'll make you host, and then you will have to, or I will put, or I'll put some Wind Cam in the waiting room. Because you are going into executive session, which is not taped.
Well, why don't we do this, why don't we go into executive session, and then you can kick everyone out but us, and then, then we can just leave.
Sounds good.
Okay, so we need a roll-call vote to go into executive session for employee review, I think that's officially what we're gonna call it. So is, do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll-call vote, Cheryl Wolf.
Hi.
Sally Dale.
Hi.
Eicheng Scott.
Hi.
Kurt Spring.
Hi.
And Dejiras's I as well, thank you.